Start our meeting in order this evening, even though it's cold outside. Appreciate everyone being here. It's good to see some faces we haven't seen here. The board will stand and Mr. Harper, would you do the invocation? Then we'll say the prayers. Everyone please stand.
That's great. Father in heaven, we thank you for this night that you've given us to come and to conduct and participate in the city business. Pray God that you'd watch over the meeting time, that all that was said and done would bring glory to you and that your perfect will would be accomplished. Thank you, Lord, for protecting us throughout this day. And as the cold weather comes, I pray God you'd watch over each person here and around in this area as the snow may be coming and the ice. Pray God that you'd give us wisdom in decisions that we make, and especially for the board tonight, that you would give them wisdom as they make decisions regarding the business of the city. Pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to my flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. That roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Alvin Reiser.
Here.
Alvin Harris.
Here.
Barry Dinn.
Here.
Alvin Johnson.
Everybody, many to look over the approved amendments of the regular meeting of December 15th. And we'll also listen to the emergency meeting of December 30th.
On the December 15th meetings, I need to make one change, and that's on the sewer line bid, where it's either first line down where it says 15, 20 square feet, either take square out of there, it'd be 50, 100 square feet.
I'll second with change. I'll order. Alvin, favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion is carried. Going to emergency call meeting of December 30th, 2015. I'll make a motion to approve those. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Alvin, favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion is carried. Going to utilities with Alvin Harris.
Right now, we're in the process of working on a sewer line, main sewer line leak on the other side of Midtown Motors, running into a lot of obstacles today, and still have not got cleared up. We've got to put a lot of ground, trying to find where this main line leak is at. That's one of our primary jobs going on, so hopefully we'll finish in that tomorrow. We've had to crank up the gas a little bit over at the, let's see here, over at the salt station due to the cold weather, but it's all under control. As you can tell, all of the carpets have been shampooed, and they actually did a pretty good job on it. Coming here that day, it smelled pretty darn good. And just for the record, last year, we had a total of 25 new gas services and 16 new sewer services. Pretty much that's it. I got for today.
Most of those gas services are in the UZ.
I've also, yes, so I think we had six in Dogwood Trace and the rest of them, so it's a stop station.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right. Just going to finance, Alvin Johnson.
Everything's doing pretty well. We might sit down and look at our utility budget a little bit, but other than that, everything's doing well.
Okay. But I'll keep. It's going to parks, Alvin Reiser.
Nothing really in parks. Would like to throw in there on the LSO, this last month, we spent roughly, or this last quarter, $2,916 on light tower repair, and we've also bolted reducers for our snow plow and a police Hummer, and some new lots, something like this.
My need does survive.
Okay.
Oh, anything on streets, Alvin Harris, pretty much takes care of that for me. Going to police, the fire, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Hey, I'm going to give the fire report. Just last month, we've had a total of 18 medical calls. We've had three fire calls, all of which were outside of the city limits. We had a miscellaneous call, that was a tree that was down. Total calls inside the city were 14, calls outside the city were eight. That's a total of 22 calls. Had two firemen that have completed their first responder class last night, and were taking a state test Thursday evening. They've been going to class three nights a week since November 30th. So these, they're taking their state test this Thursday evening. Chili supper coming up February the 6th hours of, that's on Saturday, hours of 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and it's five hours ahead.
The police report.
And I'm going to call upon interim chief Ryan Morris to give us the police report.
You're welcome, Mr. Captain.
We're just actually very interested.
You're welcome. You guys already have the stats, but we had 101 citations, 117 violations, 99 calls for service, which was pretty high, four domestics, 12 arrests, 23 reports taken, six drug charges, six accident reports, six driving under motor suspended. And we did get all of our post paperwork and everything completed and turned in on time. The governor's highway safety campaign stats were reported in the first quarter for 2016 has been reported. I'm working on right now getting bids for six laptop computers for the cars, for patrol cars, and that's going to be all funded through the governor's highway safety office at $3,200. The lights did come in for the Humvee, we're going to get those installed. We're getting bids for two radar units, which is funded by the governor's highway safety office for $2,400, and working on a department of justice grant for new vests and carriers, which is a 75% matching grant that we can get. If we ask them for, you know, if we get a $6,000 grant, it's $4,500 from them, we'd have to cover the other 1,500. So that's what I'm working on right now.
What did you hear about that grant?
Well, it's, that grant's really time consuming. It's, it's like 20 pages, so it's going to take a while to get together and turned in. We've done it before. That's actually how we got our AR-15s and our Tasers, just through the DOJ grant.
What about the alternate officers that we had talked about? Have you got anybody submit applications for that?
I've got two. How many do you have over here?
I have one.
I know you guys are underlaying, probably try to get on top of them. I know.
Yeah, I mean, you guys know how, you know, how it is. We, we're doing what we can with what we have right now, but we are drastically down, and if somebody does get sick, we're going to run into a lot of overtime, so.
Do you have somebody, I know we talked about putting the lettering on the Hummer, kind of do you militarize it a little bit, but I know it's supposed to be, but do you have somebody lined up for that, or do you know anybody that will do that? There was a guy at White House we could use to pull about, I don't have his number.
I do. He's the one did our cars. I can get in touch with him and see what we can come up with. We're just going to run into a problem with the doors.
Okay.
You know, there's a lot of canvas on that thing and not much metal, so.
Okay.
We'll figure something out. I can call him.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Hey, well, one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to bring up, we probably need to try to get ahold of some officers and put somebody in, you know, you were talking about that as far as reserve officers or part-time officers, because may say, could we have another officer save, and I don't have to cover?
That may be something to where we look at, some of the officers who need to acquire time to keep their eligibility for working their extra jobs or something. That might be something we could dip into that resource if it is available.
You just run into that problem where you have, if you have a part-time officer, they have to come so many hours a month to keep their post certification, but with a part-time officer, I'm not sure how the city policy is, they can't work any more than 32 hours in a week. So you could run into some problems there. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how many hours a month they have to do to keep their post certification. To be a full-time commissioned law enforcement officer, we'd have to check on that.
The ad runs out Friday morning for them to be able to start hiring for the new officer.
I think you have a couple of officers.
Yeah, I mean, we can get that done pretty quick, as long as you guys agree to that.
I don't think nobody has a problem with that. I figure, I know Dave White is going to be out probably for three months, but I understood.
Yeah, I actually talked, I saw him yesterday, so, yeah, it's looking like two, three months.
You say you saw him walking and all that?
Sorry.
Excuse me. All right. Good deal. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, go. I want to say something real quick. All right. Because you've got so much on your plate, we're definitely going to have to interview the officers. I'd like to suggest that Officer Bill Braden, Assistant Chief, Steve, would you be willing to be on the interview?
You're a police officer?
No, no, to do the interview. And Josh, and to set it up for Wednesday, the 27th, would that be good for you?
It likely would be.
I'd like to make that motion to go ahead and have the board approve that, so we can get this done quickly.
All right.
I'm second.
Do you have a problem with that, Chief?
Sooner the better.
All right. Second, we got a first and a second. I'll say aye.
Aye.
My motion is carried. It's going to business courts for the city recorder.
All right.
The last one's, it's already been scheduled, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You have a point? Yeah. No, that's going to become a later priority ordinance.
Yeah. I don't know anything about that one. Go on to city recorder.
The only thing I have tonight, I received an email late this afternoon, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to Mike about it yet. Mike Vower sent me an email stating that he, he has been doing our building inspecting, and he sent me an email stating that he was going to need to step down and focus more on the other two jobs that he has. I don't know what the timeline is that he's going to need to step down, but we're going to need to be looking for another building inspector.
Well, that's the right question. I was, I was, I was looking for a building inspector both.
Wasn't Mr. Gray very retired?
Yeah.
Yeah. The last meeting, the last meeting. December, the last meeting. He's retired.
Purple.
Yeah, he's, he's kept three. After he left, he lets go. He'll be sorry.
So how do we find out how, like, how long before we need to?
Tell them we need a year.
Okay. I can do that.
You know, we had Adam up here in that position for a while, and now he has taken a position. Okay, he was at White House when he first came over, then he went to Galton, but now he's gone to Goodlettsville, so Adam may be willing to do it again.
No, Adam does the state planning, and that's what we're trying to get him for on the PMV, real estate planning.
All right. Oh, that's what I'm talking about, by the way. Oh, yeah.
You're out there for a real experience.
Take Rick Gregory's, that's what I'm talking about.
It's probably the training, you don't have lives or you don't experience.
I'll do a dig into that one and figure that one out.
I just got it as I was.
I like the last minute stuff.
I opened it as I was going across lawn.
Okay. It's going to O Business Software Purchase.
This will be tied in with this resolution to join the.
Corporate.
NJPA Corporate.
NJPA.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, what that is, is it's a buying group that's already got approved state contract numbers.
State local.
Yeah.
All right. It's going to.
We need to make a motion to pass that reservation.
It's further than.
It's on there.
Okay.
It's the second one down, actually. If you want to connect that, do whatever you can, and make that note.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry. It's going to O Business Ordinance Number 2016-101, amendment 9534.
This ordinance, the only thing we're doing is we're just adding the, in the minimum lot size, we're taking out area altogether with that area per family with public sewer and area per family with, without public sewer. And that's the only thing that's changing in this ordinance. We're just classifying the area a little bit better than what it was. It was way too open for interpretation, or narrowing down that interpretation. So I'm going to make a motion, we're going to pass the ordinance 2016-101.
I'll second. We got two seconds. Alvin, favor say aye.
Aye.
This is the first reading as of January 19, 2016. Second reading will be next month, before the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. It's going to Regulation 16 dash 01, participating in NJPA 402. I'll let the college play that a little bit, but it also ties into the software purchase package, which we're waiting on for a bid.
The Tyler software that we've been looking at is, is on this cooperative program, and the girls have been looking at it two or three times, and it's some really nice software, and, because we're actually having a lot of problems with our local government, actually they've been working on our server today, and we're going to have to upgrade our workstations because they're now 12, right at 13 or 14 years old now. We're having issues, I can't keep all the computers going all the time, so we're going to have to break down and update city software, and then give workstations for the front office.
Okay. I make a motion to pass Resolution 16 dash 101, participating in NJPA 402. Player, second.
I'll second.
Alvin, favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion is carried. It's going to the parking on the streets.
We're going.
Skip over that?
Skip over that one, that's mine, please.
Chief, you, go home if you're sick. I'll sit over there, though, maybe.
Yeah, maybe bring.
No, go ahead. I had that for about three weeks, it's rough.
All right.
It's going down to ditch cleaning bucket purchase.
This is for a ditch cleaning bucket, 40 inch, in order to start clearing out our drainage ditches alongside our roads. I make a motion that we approved $1,016.47 in order to purchase said bucket. This also comes with two bucket bins, and it fits right on our new minix.
Does it work with the cover, please?
Yes.
Okay.
It sure does. Yep.
How much is it?
$1,016.47.
I'll second the motion. No, that's a motion, second motion, Alvin, favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion is carried. Going down to cover cleaning against on time, on time. Going down to police chief position, which I asked Mr. Morris to go wait in Galley's sick. Vice Mayor Anderson, I have.
Well, yeah, I have a motion I want to make, and the motion is for the city of Rich Top to keep Officer Brian Morris in a position of interim police chief for a probation period lasting up to three months. During this period, additional pay will be paid as suggested by M-TAS. At any time during this three-month probation period, the board can make a decision to make this position permanent.
I'll second the motion, Alvin, favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion is carried in my position. I'm pretty quick tonight, we've got a scheduled workshop for February.
February is the tip date.
While we're looking over that, I received a card from Jerry Wan Dickens thanking the city for their help in the Christmas gift. Miss Wan has watched over our parks for years, our Rich Top Park over here, the Rock Park. I'd like to thank her for the card.
That'd be the 14th.
No.
Fifteen.
It'd be the 15th.
Oh, that is my, okay, I'm sorry.
That's George Washington's birthday.
I'm sorry.
Let's do it anyway.
That's fine, I, I come up a little bit later date, or the later time, excuse me, we still do 7:30 or so. Hopefully, we won't go as long as it was last night.
Okay.
Yeah. He deserved it.
Maybe 7:30, everybody are.
I'm great with that. There's no time for that.
All right. Any citizens comment? Just start.
So we've got a few people here from Rich Top Station, and a little disappointing the chief, I believe, I didn't realize he was sick, but he actually brought up us coming here. We've had an issue for the last couple of years. I think I was actually the second resident in Rich Top Station. And we've had an issue with noise, the nuisance behind us at the farm. Apparently, there's a teenage boy right there that's always motorcycles, four-wheelers, trucks, you name it, constantly making noise. Citizens on Lake Road and in Rich Top Station have been calling, I've called countless times. At some point last summer, we came to court in this very building, and the judge told him not to do it anymore, told him to sell the motorcycle, not to ride, that he was going to be cited. Since then, I guess interim chief has spoken to the city attorney and found out that maybe the ordinance isn't quite as bulletproof as we need it to be, because he was, he's fearful that if he gets sued by the boy, that he might lose because of the way the ordinance is written. So he suggested that we come up here, and actually, I think I talked to someone up here several months ago as well, and I was told to start calling Robertson County Dispatch, because when we were calling the cell phone from the police department here in Rich Top, all that wasn't being logged, so we didn't have an account for how many times this guy was being called and complained about. I can tell you, I've called no less than probably 12 or 15 times, probably more, come to court, and I've gone and talked to neighbors a few times myself. It's to the point to where people across the street, on both sides, and both sides of the neighborhood, have constantly called and complained. Apparently, there's a, there's, the way the ordinance is written, he can make any type of noise he wants for about 30 minutes up until 10 or 11 o'clock at night. There's really nothing that we can do when we call the police, even though it's a nuisance to countless neighbors, and it's all random days, night, weekends. During the day, he's supposed to be in school, but he's apparently homeschooled for discipline problems back when he was in early elementary, and interim chief suggested that we come up here and talk to the city commissioner, the mayor, and city attorney, and see if we could do something by getting that ordinance.
Is he alive over there next year?
He does. He lives with his grandmother on a farm.
Do you know the Brown?
Oh, is that who, Brown?
Yeah, I'm not sure who they were, but that sounds familiar, but apparently, he's no stranger to having visits from the Rich Top Police Department for various reasons. I don't know anything about his character, all I know is that it's a nuisance to a lot of people on both sides of that farm, both, both on Lake Road and the established subdivision, and the new subdivision of Rich Top Station, which me and at least three or four of the people here.
Is he riding on the street?
He doesn't ride on the street anymore than I've seen he was.
He's down on the four wheeler.
But he gets basically, I guess when he was riding in the past, that was just an open field, but now that there's houses right along the other side of that creek, I mean, he, you know, there's really nowhere that he can ride, that it's not just a nuisance because of the way the farm is, it's not that wide, it's more of a long stretch of land, and, you know, even when a couple of Rich Top police have gone over there in the past, some of the things he's ridden have mufflers even, but just because it has a muffler, it's still, you know, a lot of the things he rides are still pretty loud. Even if he's just riding normally, it's still just, you hear it. I mean, I don't, I don't know if any of you have, I've never called and complained about the racetrack, you know what I mean? It's like, certain noises just happen.
I remember I made sure I get.
If somebody's killing their garden or playing on a field, it's, it's regular maintenance, you know things are going to happen, cutting the grass at 7:00 o'clock, I'd say wait till 9:00, but go ahead, cut your grass, you know? But that, you know, this unnecessary noise that happens day and night on all types of different vehicles, it's actually cost the sale of a couple of houses over in that neighborhood as well, where realtors were out with people, and they would be back there, and people would just get in the car and leave. I mean, it's, you know, and America's had the same conversations with people, I've had the same conversations when they ask me about the neighborhood. I say, I love it here, I'm from, I built that house about two years ago, love it in Rich Top, but they need to be wary of the neighborhood, because it's just, we haven't been able to control it at this point. We thought we had a control as of last summer when we came to court, but apparently, it was more strong vergage from the, from the judge as opposed to actually legal action, so.
Well, the judge can fine you a larger amount if you didn't participate in what's told to you by the judge.
Well, see, the, here's, here's the problem. When I left, and I wish you hadn't walked in yet, what is Billy's last name? Billy Dean lives behind me, there on Ellen in Court. He and the Hattersville police officer both came to court with me last summer. It looked very clear to me when we walked out of court that he was not to ride anymore, that he would be cited, and that it would go to Springfield if it needed to, but that he would be cited, he'd be paying $500 tickets, and the grandmother was trying to negotiate terms, and the judge just wasn't having it. So we thought it was resolved. What's happened since then is the Rich Top Police Department, and it's been unfortunate, we've been trying to wait to escalate this. Another issue is, I talked to the chief on Sunday, he told me that he had gotten the position, because I had called Robertson County twice to complain, and I kept waiting to have this meeting until we had a full-time chief, so I, that was kind of my bad, I actually thought we had a full-time chief already. I was trying to avoid having the interim situation where somebody was involved that maybe didn't have the full story or have a stake in the game. But we kind of had that conversation then when we left, and now the Rich Top police are going over there, and they're having their own conversations to where it's not about what the judge said, it's about what they're reading into the ordinance, and can they really uphold this ordinance based on what he's doing? They're saying it's not really a nuisance ordinance, that it's a noise ordinance, and he can make all the noise he wants until 11:00.
So I don't have a copy of our noise ordinance, I've read it, but I don't remember what it says. Anybody recall, or have a copy of it?
It's basically, the way it's been paraphrased to me, and I've not read it either, I've not seen it, and he was, he had actually told me he would be here, I didn't, like I said, realize he was sick, but.
Well, I didn't, I let it go.
Yeah, totally understandable. The way, the way he's, he's paraphrasing to me is, they can make any type of noise, I mean, I guess that could be, and the conversations that I had with him were, so I can go out in my yard and just turn the radio off, or, you know, rev up a race car for 30 minutes and you can't do anything about it? He said, well, the way the ordinance is written, no. To me, there's a difference.
The difference there is, you're in a subdivision that has covenances that cover that.
Our covenants do not cover that, actually. Our covenants, the only thing that really, our covenants are an eight and a half by 11 page, and I think there may be two bullets on the back. It's mainly about street parking, about trailers, about things that can be front, the way you build your fence on the back corner of your house, it's really that kind of stuff. There's really nothing, and it's also an unmonitored association. There's really no meetings or forums necessary. So what we're faced with now is, we need the city itself to either change the ordinance or add an ordinance based on nuisance, to where an unproductive noise can be dealt with by Rich Top Police Department without being fear of litigation from whoever they're talking to.
My suggestion is have the police department come back out there inside of the end, bring it to court, and the judge, let the judge know that he's not cooperating, done what he's been told to do, and if that don't work, they're going to take our step to the county. I don't mind personally changing the ordinance if it's not written correctly. The only problem with that, I don't know how that would affect us with, you know, it's already there now, and then go ahead and change it as far as a legal issue, so.
Yeah.
I'm not an attorney, but I wouldn't think that that would.
And that was one of the issues they had, apparently, and I won't use the name because I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but there's somebody on, on the other side of town on Bets Road that has been complained about, but his noise situation is a little bit different, his is more about productive land, so maybe plowing and using actual equipment, doing something productive. To me, that's different than somebody doing donuts in a field, you know, all hour of the day and night on motorcycles and that, that kind of thing, so. I think even if, even if we get it taken care of, and I wish chief was here, because they've told me, he told me Sunday on my front porch, they are unwilling to write tickets at this point, they will not cite them. So that's kind of where.
I know, I'm not, I don't know everything about the policeman, but I know there's a noise ordinance, and I also know there's a disturbing peace ordinance, and I would think that would probably follow to that.
Yeah.
As much as it would.
He's had conversations, or were they roundtable with the police department, and he said, until we get the ordinance changed, or until he gets some kind of guidance from, or until he gets some kind of guidance from City Hall, that they're not going to cite them." Even though he understands our plight, he understands everybody's complaints. They get tired of going out there. We get tired of calling. And I just don't feel like there's any action going to be taken about.
You remember when you brought it to court, the first time when the judge told you and all that?
I don't specifically. It was sometime in the summer. I could try to find, I've called up here twice to try to find out a record of that. I'm not exactly sure.
I was gonna say, we can pull it up from a computer.
Okay.
We need to get that with the judge and let him handle that part because if he's not done following the man of the judge, then he's actually attempting to call her.
Yeah. I would think so too, but again, when I talked to the police department, they say that, you know, the way that, it was really just more of a stern talking to, that there was nothing legally done by the judge.
Well, the judge can only do so much based on what we have for an ordinance.
Yeah, exactly. Which is why, which is why we keep circling back to, we're kind of, you know, a circular reference always brings us back to, we either need to add a nuisance ordinance or change the existing ordinance to where we've got something to stand up to, so.
Because I mean, we're, we're not the big C. We're out in the country and of course, a lot of that, a lot of those type of noises, nobody considers.
Which is something, I could see some of the detail in the ordinance of having to do with decibels, distance from the sound. And I mean, I could think that there'd certainly be something in the ordinance that says that, you know, if it's not too much noise, it's okay. Or if it goes above a certain decimal, then we've got to have a way to monitor or something. But I tell you what, there is, I know people who go into Brentwood, I mean, into Bell Mead with construction vehicles and stuff, and they have a very good ordinance that's written properly. If we can look on their website and see what they have, you know, for the planning permission or whatever. It might be that we could use a bit of their information to come up with the proper wording and the way to monitor it. I mean, you know, just coming up with a way to control it is difficult because there's so many loopholes that can be. But however, some of the cities around us have, you know, proper wording that ensures it doesn't happen.
Correct. Her ordinance states 50 feet, if I can hear you 50 feet away and for longer than 30 minutes, I can call in as a noise ordinance. The problem is there is no punishment behind it. It's basically, somebody goes over there. Now, I know personally, because I've ridden with two of them, our officers have sit over there in a cul-de-sac. I believe there's one of you guys that was, I want to say a Navy SEAL.
I was a ranger. There's an Hattersville cop that lives behind me.
I know we sat in your driveway where he could not see the cop car. We had the windows down and we sat there for two hours. We were trying to catch him. They've been over there. I know Tomlin's been over there, I want to say 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday or something. And I know Brian's been over there. I've talked to him personally. It's, it's very, it's very vague because you get in, you know, like you said, Bell Mead's fine, but I understand with the motorcycles, but I know behind my house, the guy bush hogging. It's just one of them things.
Yeah, again, if it was irregular productive maintenance, you got no problem with it. If the guy came like that, you know, if he bush hogged it every month, I wouldn't care.
We would just have to watch how we word it because, you know, it might make my neighbor mad that this guy's bush hogging. By the law, they need to go write in the ticket. They should. And if they don't, they could be in jeopardy. So, it's, I don't know.
So, to me, like the neighbor doesn't care much about y'all's opinion on anything. That's the thing about.
That's the thing is, you know, there's at least, I would say probably 12 or 15 houses in Ridge Top Station that are probably affected. And I was at, I was Christmas shopping and I was down in Rivlegate and I met a guy that worked at Nakawasaki Castle. And he just happened to live on Lake Road. When we found out we both lived in Ridge Top, we started talking. We lived a driver and a fisherman way away from each other. And he lives like three houses past on Lake Road if you turn right on Living Good. He just, he's like the third house up. His mother died of brain cancer this spring. He had gone over and asked the guy to please stop riding while she was in pain and she was at home with hospice. And he said even then, he still wouldn't do it, even after going over. He's just, he's just not a very good neighbor. And everybody's tried in different ways to communicate with him. The police have been over there. Officer Morris has told me at least twice, on two occasions, that they go by there on a regular basis, one, every one to two weeks, just to sit with the boy and his grandmother, just to try to keep him in line. So.
Wasn't he told to ride on the other side of the farm?
He was told, well, that's why I came up in court that day. They started, they were trying to plead, you know, let's try to come up with some kind of deal. And I actually brought it to the judge. It seems impossible to enforce. We're over complicating a situation to where just don't do it or go somewhere else and ride. There's plenty of places to ride. Don't do it right behind a new subdivision. And the judge actually agreed and said, "You know what? You're right. That's not going to be enforceable. We're not going to be able to tell which side of the farm you're on. It's just going to exaggerate the problem. So, no." And then, you know, that was it. When we walked out, apparently, they have a tenant that lives on a rental house on that same farm. He got a little malady at the back door with me and the Hattersville cop and the other guy. And apparently, the assistant chief turned around and he's got fingers the size of my forearms and he turned around and squashed that pretty quickly. Kind of told him to mind his business. And I would be surprised if it's not documented. It was a pretty eventful afternoon, so.
Can we talk to the judge and see what he, obviously.
I don't think the judge has anything to stand on, by what I'm understanding.
That's the problem. That's the problem. The way the ordinance is written, really good you can do.
He's going to have a lot better idea of how we could write an ordinance for our city that would best fit us versus any of us up here where.
It's one of those things where I didn't make talk to Intas to find out about another city that has an ordinance that would work, you know.
I like your idea. Look into Bell Mead and see what they've got.
Yeah. I'm not saying we need to try to be like Bell Mead. I'm just saying they have proper work in there. Then we might could just take 90% of what they have and have everything we need in Ridge Top possibly. So, case study is something that's worthy of our attention.
I live across the street from Jason, so I'm even that much farther away. The guy behind me on Living Good bush hogs two or three times a summer. I can't hear him at all. But the motorcycle, I can hear him. He'll run for two, you know, it's not just 30 minutes. It's two hours, two and a half hours non-stop, you know. And I'm, like I said, I'm far away from him and the people there, you know, on the court. And I can hear it and you turn up your TV and it's just, it's non-stop. And I can't hear the racetrack there, to be honest with you. I mean, that's, that's kind of the difference, you know. I said the bush hog doesn't, I rarely hear him. He's riding inside my back door. But the motorcycle, even though it's muffler, because that was the first time I asked Jason, I said, "Maybe he doesn't have a muffler, but order he does, but it's still, and it's non-stop." And I've seen him riding the four-wheeler, of course, when it snowed last year. He rode the four-wheeler down into Station Drive and just did donuts and spun, had a girl in the back with him, you know, just non-stop. Of course, I know we got a video. If you wanted to see that, we'll try to get that if we ever do see it again. But that was, that was the other option. We seen him just come right out of the, you know, out of the farm, turn left, come down Station Drive and just, you know, because he's on, you know, I guess basically concrete or pavement at that time. He spun and slid and, you know, had a good time. And I did that when I was younger as well too. Did it, you know, on the grass, but never on the road. So, that's something we've seen as well, of course, that, you know, we would try to get video, I guess, you know, in the future if we see it again. But, you know, like he said, the difference can be productive and just, you know, bush hogging. I've never heard a bush hog be that annoying as much as I've heard that motorcycle just non-stop for two hours.
It's, yeah, I could be inside and I've got three girls. The last two are twins. We can have the TV on, kids playing, hardwood floors to where it's even louder inside, all the doors and windows closed and you still hear it over the TV and kids playing. I mean, it's just, it's very invasive.
Other than complaining, I mean, that's not set up alone and all that. I mean, it's, you know, people like that when we were young, but it's, it's just a really non.
Does it not have a muffler on it or?
Everything that he's, that the Ridge Top Police have verified so far has had mufflers on them.
They're good at all.
When they just put those cans on the end, they're not, I mean, and I'm a motorcycle enthusiast. I've probably had five motorcycles in the last two years. I've ridden dirt bikes. I've raced dirt bikes my whole life. I've ridden every type of motorcycle. But I'm also a good neighbor. I guarantee you, nobody in my neighborhood has ever hurt me on a motorcycle. You know, there's, there's a time and a place and.
Is it a dirt bike that he's riding?
It's a dirt bike. It's a four-wheeler. It's, it's a.
But it's a dirt bike. They're going to be loud even if it's.
Yeah, yeah, even a four-stroke dirt bike if it has sound. It's going to cut, it's going to pierce the sound.
Now, there's a diesel truck. I don't know who drives it or not, but it's just, he'll just go up and down the driveway in the diesel truck. I mean, he's not going anywhere. He'll just go up, turn around, come down, and it's as hard and as loud as he can make it go.
And apparently.
It's what's odd about it is you just watch him go back and forth, back and forth.
So, here's the thing. Apparently, the backstory is he got kicked out of elementary school. He homeschools. He works in a shop with the tenant that lives on that land and doing some kind of small motor, some type of local activity. So, he's not in school all day. He's, he's out in the garage with motors and stuff. So, you know, I understand that there's going to be a need, even if it was a productive, you know, occasionally, he's test firing something to see if it works. I get that. But that's not what's happening. This is like, this is just killing time constantly, you know.
After y'all came to court, how, how long did it stay?
It took about, it took about three to four weeks and we didn't hear a peep. It was quiet. As a matter of fact, when they moved in, I believe I told, I believe I told Cal, but I think we had to take, I actually said, "Problem solved. You know, y'all moved in at a good time" or something like that. And, you know, it wasn't shortly thereafter that it started kind of getting progressively worse. And I'm assuming that he probably did his own research and found out that there were really no teeth in it once he wasn't getting excited. But there was actually one point, it was one of the first times that I'd heard it after, after we'd been to court. A police, Ridge Top Police was actually down at one of the last houses on, on the line that we're all in. And the guy, there was a new resident moving in. Ridge Top Police was right there. And as I'm down there talking to him, they're like, "Hey, have you heard him?" He's, he's killing it. He's, he's riding the whole time. And the Ridge Top Police says, "It isn't loud to me." And I was like, "It's not really your call. We've been to court on this." And now I've got Ridge Top Police not even really supporting what the judge had just said. He didn't really know what it had been said in court. The dissemination of information wasn't happening. So, it was at that point when it really started getting frustrating to where I found that, you know, we weren't getting anywhere. You know, we've been dealing with this for well over a year. I guess I'll be there two years at the end of this month. And we've been dealing with it just about the whole time to the point that it's just extremely frustrating.
Matt, can I add something? Sorry. My name's Erica Byron. I live near Ridge Top Station. And I actually live by property above the property behind me that he rides. And I have a six-year-old daughter and it's very bothersome. But in my frequent conversations with Officer Wiley, in fact, one day, he just stopped to carry on a conversation and the young man had started his dirt bike. And my understanding from Officer Wiley is it's a 30-minute contiguous, 30 contiguous minutes that he can actually ride. But then there's nothing to stipulate the break, how long the break needs to be and how often that 30 minutes can occur in a day. So, I think what I've recognized is that the young man will ride for roughly 30 minutes. I haven't timed it. And then there will be a five-minute break and then he'll pick it back up again. And so, when I've complained again, the response is, "Has it been beyond 30 minutes? How long has he been doing it?" So, then I have no luck to stand on.
I'm sorry, but at 9:30 at night on a school night, nobody wants to deal with it when they're trying to get a kid to bed or much less two or three or a six-year-old. I mean, it's, you know, it's not reasonable.
Disturbing pieces after 10 or 11.
Yeah, but that's, there's really nothing.
I thought it was 10.
It's 10 o'clock. I would say most of them are trying to get kids to bed at 8:00, 10:00. I mean, you know, they got to be at school. You got to get up at 5:30, 6:00, you know, so that's, that's just a con, especially when the TVs are off. And at that point, you're trying to get quiet and it's, it's non-stop. It's not the back of winter, but in the summer or, you know, or towards the summer, towards the end of the school year, it's just non-stop too.
My suggestion is to White, Rasmair Anderson, see what he can come up with for an ordinance. And maybe let the plaintiff board and look at it. I don't know where we stand on making an ordinance and then trying to back it up is my only question on that. But first thing, we need to get in touch with the judge and let him know what's going on. Because for what level I know about court, I'm almost serious and violation of what he was told to do, it sounds like.
Yeah. I think part of the problem is we, for some reason, Ridge Top Police Department decided that it was, it was strong language as opposed to an order and they weren't really enforcing it. And they haven't been for the last several months. So, that's kind of, that's kind of why I was waiting for the interim tag to be removed and find a permanent chief.
What did his grandmother say about all that?
She's, she has a very enabling attitude to where Junior does nothing wrong and we'll try to work it out, but it's, you know.
Sounds like he has that too. We don't care about it.
Yeah, he definitely has that.
But you know, I think the judge did all he could really do. I think the judge did all he could really do because.
I'm not sure of that. I think if he told him to stop doing it at a certain time, I don't know what, what, what he, I don't know what he issued his judgment. I don't know what he heard. But if he told him not to do it at a certain time and the gentleman agreed with it and he's still doing it, then he's in violation of.
There was an agreement that the grandmother, they had all agreed that he was going to sell the motorcycle and that it would stop. And then that's what we heard for, you know, when it started picking back up. Well, he did sell that motorcycle, but then he got another one and now he's got a four-wheeler. So, it's like, he'll, I think that's part of his business is he buys, you know, cracks, lets broken motorcycles and fixes them and then rides them and that kind of thing. So, it's, you know, maybe legally, he technically sold that motorcycle, but he's still got something back there that he's riding.
So, now this, this is a young man now. He's not a fifth grader.
He's 15 years old.
Interim chief, interim chief told me that he was 14 or 15. I was under the impression when I moved in two years ago that he was 16. So, I was already, and I already made, you know, kind of smart aleck remarks to, you know, my family that, well, he's 16, he'll be 18. He's got to be pushing 18. He'll either be moved out or in jail, so who cares? Well, then I talked to the interim chief on Sunday and he's like, "No," he's like, "He's 14, so he's almost 15." So, I'm like, "Yeah, I'm not dealing with this for two, three, you know, four more years." So, I was thinking he was pretty close to leaving home, but we've still got probably three or four more years of this, it sounds like.
Are you aware that he's, he does buy and sell a lot? Is this just hearsay or do we?
No, I don't know for a fact. All I know is what the Ridge Top Police tell me when they say, "Well, that motorcycle that he was driving or that he was riding is gone." But then we see him on a new four-wheeler and we see him on the two trucks and we see him on, you know, I've got countless videos that I've taken of him on different bikes, different helmets, you know, just in case it ever mattered, but.
Robertson County's got an ordinance that happened over on Quinno Ranch. You know, he had his little bike shop and people were riding up and down. Cannot think of the name. That runs off Bethel Road and Robertson County. They passed.
Ken Dorrishrod?
Grahamsonrod.
Are you talking about Quinno's?
Quinno's, yeah.
Yeah.
They, Robertson County passed an ordinance to basically not shut him down, but the noise ordinance, that's something that probably.
Well, there were, there were people, the difference there was there were people racing out of there when they were leaving and there was actually a fatality on top of the, on the crest of that hill, I believe. I believe somebody slipped underneath the car.
Yes, his neighbor, it was also a noise ordinance that Robertson County passed it because I talked to a couple of the commissioners about it and they were doing it. And I'll, I'll actually like to call and see what they did. See if there's something that since we're under Robertson County, maybe we could fall under their umbrella that would give our officers a little more.
And that's what sounded like the judge was going to do. He was, he was kind of under the impression that if we couldn't work it out here, that he was going to refer him to Springfield. This kind of wasn't one of his comments. So, I'll be interested to see what we can find documented from that day.
I think he was trying to scare them. I was sitting.
I agree.
I heard him, but going back to the officers to back those up, if there's nothing in the books, they really can't do anything. We're putting him in a live building. He is right. And honestly, it stinks to say that because again, the kid needs to, oh, just be a good neighbor and park his craft in Florida or before that. Because I'd be.
And don't let it carry on for.
If I was giving my daughter the sleep.
That's all I've got on the topic. Quick throwback to your Humvee issue. They do sell full hard sided doors with slide-down windows. Do you get rid of at least probably 80% of your canvas unless you've got the canvas over the hood? So.
We can't, we can't mod, we can't change anything. We can't even change the.
So, you got to keep your green canvas?
When we were leaving, well, we can dye it, but we can't change the structure of it. When we were leaving Fort Campbell, they had some, the nicer doors, the hard doors. And the guy said, "No, it's all itemized to this. If you change it, you're in violation. You can't do that."
Can we have your name just for?
Yes, Jason Holt, H-O-L-T.
What's your name, sir? Scott DiLahay, D-I-L-A-H-AY.
Your name, ma'am?
Erica Byron.
And when we get to the point, if there needs to be a petition or something, I've talked to just about everybody within earshot of the farm and they've all been very supportive. Some of them have been over at the border, couldn't make it tonight. So, I would say everybody affected would be willing to sign if we just could get to a point that we're moving forward, so.
Speaking of paperwork, have all y'all filled out your census card?
About two months ago.
We're still working on that project.
If you talk to your neighbor, make sure they have.
Well, it doesn't make a difference in this.
It helps fund, it helps fund legal.
You know, the extra family members want to move in.
By the way, just for the record, our noise ordinance is 11-402-1-E pertaining to that.
Thank you. We'll do what we can to try to.
So, should we plan on coming up here on a monthly basis to kind of shepherd this through with you guys or how does that, or how would you?
I, what I understood, you're welcome to come all you want or you're welcome anytime. But I think Rasmair Anderson is going to try to see what kind of ordinance to pass on to the plaintiff board and see what they could put together.
Well, not only that, but maybe some information from Intas. And then I think you were going to call one of the neighboring communities as well. I think we'll all get together, try to put together stuff and maybe.
I'm not sure the judge.
Get it to you, Kelly, and let you pool it together, you know, compile the information and get it to mine. But now, let's say we, we get a new ordinance going through. Does it go through two readings to change it? But we can have a special call and do one, correct? Or could we? We'll see if we can't do this and expedite it.
It'd be nice to be done by spring for sure.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Seasonality.
Just saying, now, he would really be hardcore guy if he's out doing it tonight, wouldn't he?
I think, I think when the judge hears that he's basically disobeyed his orders, I think he's going to really be willing to help us write an ordinance to help Ridge Top and help this situation out because.
I was going to say, I'll call this citation.
He was very stern about.